Now, what's...now is it feedback or is it just line noise?
It's line noise. It's a hum.
Okay. All right, let me do seven first. Now, I...
Matt, I'm sorry. Hold on a second.
So I'm just swapping it. I just had to reconnect it so I could pull. All right, so that's a new cable. Let me double check. Are all of your games the same? All right, well you can check.
I'm getting some line noise.
On three still?
Yeah. A lot on seven.
No, it's not there because I was able to get back on South Orange Jail and come down to that intersection, so it's further. Well, I don't know because I came down...they had the S-curves blocked off, so then I had to detour around. So I came down like Wyoming and came down South Orange Jail and then they detoured me off right after the school. And then I came back. So it's on that hill, but it's like between where the South Orange School... Yeah, so it's in there. It's here. Just several cop cars, but nothing else.
I mean, you can find that, but I just don't really know. See, this is sort of for you to write about, see? What? No, I could go with something.
We'll see if it's still blocked off when I...
You can post it. I'd like to know.
Switched up the cables.
I swear I have batteries in my car.
It's like you're not going to notice anything? I don't need you to do anything. I need you to just leave it down until you're ready to listen.
The student was supposed to come and just watch. Well, I know, but I know they're going to do it next time, but the student was supposed to come and watch this time for a while. Well, I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal because the Public Safety Committee is recommending against it, so I don't know.
All right, give it a listen.
Three and seven still have line.
Okay. How's that?
Oh, yeah?
All right.
Yeah, it was pretty. It's too bad because, you know.
Let's try seven.
I gotta pull everything else down because I got something. Seven is good.
Try six. All right, so it's the unit.
Right after I put this story on Facebook about the...
Try six again.
Six is good.
Try seven again. Okay.
Well, we know why. We just don't know who. One was providing a police car and he was late. And then the other one got a sick leave suspension.
Try three.
By these sick leave policies, whether he lied about being sick or what. They don't provide...
Try seven.
I do not believe when they are suspended. I don't know whether they're suspended or paid.
All right. Okay. Try seven. Okay. I can unplug? Shot?
Clean.
Try...
Some, but not lot.
Yeah, apparently it's chasing the stocks and bases going along with it.
Okay, thank you everybody. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Just a note that we did not get to finish all of our executive session items, so we're going to continue them. We'll recess the executive session and go back into executive session after the end of our conference agenda. Could I please have the roll again?
Trustee Clark?
Still here.
Trustee Collin?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levinson?
President.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnau?
Here.
Village President Turpik?
Here.
Barry Lewis, Village Administrator, Stephen Rother, Village Counsel, Adam Lerner, Deputy Village Administrator, and myself, Chanel Smith.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we've got a couple announcements tonight before we get started. Just one more reminder, if there's anybody who's interested in volunteering, we still have a couple openings and there's always ways that people can get involved. Please visit the website at southorange.org and find the volunteering section and you can choose from a list of things that you might be interested in from a drop-down menu and submit your application to get involved. If you do have any further questions about that, you can call the Clerk's Office, 973-378-7715, extension 7726. Just a reminder about SOMA TV, our public access television station has a public bulletin board that can be used by anybody in the community to get information out about anything, special events or announcements. The bulletin board plays on the screen from 5:00 to 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM to 9:30 AM, as well as between different programming throughout the day. If you're interested in doing that, you can visit somatv.org/bulletin.php and enter your event announcement. Just make sure it's 15 words or less. If you have detailed announcements or need any more information, you can email joy.yagid@gmail.com. And please just make sure to send those as text in the email or a Word document. Just another reminder about South Orange Connect, SO Connect, our Public Stuff application. We have officially done our soft launch. We've talked about this a couple times in the meetings already, but this is a mobile application and a web service that you can use to report all sorts of things. We're getting a lot of snow removal requests in right now, that's one example, of a request that you can submit, as well as gas lamp outages, code enforcement issues, property maintenance, potholes, anything like that. And you can go to the iTunes Store or the Google Play Store, download the app to your phone. All you have to do is take your phone out, you can take a picture of anything. It uses the GPS to put it on a map and you send it right in. And depending on which kind of complaint or compliment, there is a spot for that, don't forget to submit those. You can submit that item to us and it will go directly into a workflow to our department heads who can then take care of it. And we'll also do their best that especially if there is an issue that requires more information from you, or it's an issue that's a little more complicated, or there's multiple steps, they will leave a comment. You'll get a ticket number so you can check back on the status of it. So we really do suggest anybody watching this try it out. We see more and more people download it every day. And we're going to continue to do some more kind of publicity around it to make sure as many people as possible know that this is available. If you don't have a smartphone but you still want to use the service, you can actually go to southorange.org/311. You sign up for an account, which will also sign you up for emergency alerts, which is a good thing to do anyway. And you can actually do the same thing basically from your computer or from any internet browser. Container Day, the next dates for the next Container Day dates are on the Saturdays, the following Saturdays, April 26th, May 17th, June 21st, July 26th, August 23rd, September 27th. Those are from 8:00 AM to 1:45 PM. Make sure you get there before 1:30. And make sure you bring a form of ID. This is for residents only and no commercial vehicles are allowed. And just one more reminder about Jafflo Tree Service, they're still going to be out. I don't know if we have an end date. Mr. Lewis, maybe that's one of the things we can ask from PSCNG, just till we know the kind of timeframe that they're going to be operating. But they are still out, doing tree trimming, and we'll see if we can get the exact timeframe. But they're out now. You don't have to do anything, they'll come to your home. And if they miss you, like we've said before, they'll leave a tag on your door. Make sure to get that information and follow up with them. And we're really hoping that this is going to cut down on some of the problems that can arise when we have some of these storms. Fortunately, we've made it through the last couple in pretty good shape with minimal power outages here in town, although some of our surrounding towns actually did see some power outages. And I suppose I'll take this one moment. It seems like every board meeting now, we're thanking Public Works for how good of a job that they do. And hopefully, well, we do have another storm coming up, so we'll do the same thing the next meeting. But again, I think all, you know, I can speak for all the trustees, we really appreciate all the work that all the Public Works folks do. They really do an exceptional job. And I know I get a ton of positive feedback from residents afterwards. But if there is an issue that you do have, and especially with this snow, which is basically ice, please use that Public Stuff application and you can submit that to us so we can take a look at it and come take care of it. And we do have salt, although don't tell the other towns. And thanks to a very proactive Public Works Director. And one more reminder also about Zipcar, we do have those available. There's two Zipcars in the downtown, if you haven't heard. And you can get a little bit more information on zipcar.com, find the map. There are lots of Zipcars in the area and some of the other towns as well. And I think the membership starts at about $6 a month and it's around $12 or $18 an hour to rent the car. But we're really excited, this is a very green transportation option that we now have for people. And hopefully, we can help residents see some cost savings from it as well, if they don't need to purchase another car. So make sure to check that out. And if you enjoy it, you know, tell your friends about it. At this time, I would like to open the meeting up for public comments. I do not remember the last time we did not have anyone sign up, but is there anybody who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, I would like to close public comments and move on to our ordinance for first reading.
Ordinance 2014-03, an ordinance to amend and restate the Central Business District redevelopment plan in its entirety.
So this may sound a little bit familiar to folks that are watching. Mr. Rother, do you want to let everybody know why we're back considering this again, briefly?
Yes. A question came up during the second reading of a similar ordinance, one that's being repealed with the adoption of this ordinance, if it is adopted, regarding the publication. And we did indeed during the meeting find out that it had been published in one of the two official publications. But on examination, the next day of the actual publication, there was a defect in the publication. And so it's being adopted anew. I made some revisions to the ordinance. It will be posted with the attachment going forward. The description, when it is published, will be a description of summary aspects of the of the plan. And should this body approve it on first reading tonight, it will be forwarded to the planning board for their comment.
Okay, thank you. The changes that you mentioned to the ordinance, are they substantial changes or are they just language changes?
They were style changes.
Okay.
Okay? I would just note it, the, on the website is the ordinance and the plan. The 20-page plan is on the website as well.
Okay. And that was something that a few folks had asked about last time. So for those that might be interested, you can visit the website and find that information now. Unless there's any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
No question.
Yep.
Could we go back to the referral to the planning board? It's my understanding that they will have 45 days with the document.
They do.
And we will be giving them not just the ordinance that deals with the office overlay, but all the amendments that the planner had suggested to redevelopment plan.
The entire plan. They get the entire plan because the amendment is a, an amended and restated plan in its entirety. So they'll get to see the entire plan when it gets referred to them.
Okay, and that's for consistency with our master plan, or they can choose to not take any action, in which case in 45 days, it just comes back to the board.
That's right.
Or they could make recommendations and this board not take those recommendations and still move forward.
That's right. As long as you state on the record your reasons for not accepting them, you could go ahead without using their recommendations. Correct.
Well, only to clarify, the only thing you have to state on the record your reasons is if they find an inconsistency with the master plan.
Yeah.
They may find it consistent and then offer some additional suggestions, which you can adopt or not adopt, but you don't have to have that formal process as it relates to those.
I move the ordinance.
I second. Okay, moved by trustee Collin, seconded by trustee Chanel. We have the roll, please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collin?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnau?
Yes.
The board has adopted ordinance 2014-03 on first reading.
Thank you. And just for one particular guest in our audience, when we adopt an ordinance on first reading, that's the first step. To adopt any ordinance, we have to do a first reading and a second reading. So this is the first time that we consider it. And now that it's passed, not the next meeting, but two meetings from now, we will consider the same ordinance. And if we pass it at that point, that's when it becomes a law. So all ordinance are those two-step processes. I think that was the only ordinance for first reading.
Yes.
Now, we have two for second reading.
Ordinance 2014-01 on second reading, an ordinance to amend Section 61-10 of the Business Chapter of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village, to further define licensing requirements of certain landscapers who provide services in the village.
Thank you. And this is, I believe, just some housekeeping updates to this licensing, where all the landscapers that do operate within the village and are allowed to be a commercial entity here do have to come into the village and fill out an application and end up becoming licensed.
If they're not, if they're not state.
If they are not, right. This is, this is catching people who, that miss the state licensing program, certificate, license. Unless, this is on for second reading, so at this time, I'd like to open this ordinance up for public hearing. So if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak about this ordinance, please come forward. Surprising, I thought this was a controversial. Seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak about this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing. And unless there's any further questions or comments from the board, I'd like to ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by trustee Levinson?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford. And could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Collin?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnau?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
The board has adopted ordinance 2014-01 on second reading.
Thank you.
Presi, excuse me, ordinance 2014-02, an ordinance establishing salary ranges for members of the OPEIU for the years 2014, for the year 2014.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, do you want to just give a brief?
This just by ordinance sets forth the salary ranges that were already previously approved in the collective bargaining agreement. So it's basically just putting in ordinance the contract that we're already obligated to.
Okay. Seeing as this is on second reading, I'd like to open this up for public hearing. If there's any member of the public who wishes to comment on this ordinance, seeing as there is no members of the public who wish to comment on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing. And unless there's further questions or comments from the board, ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by trustee Collin, seconded by trustee Levinson. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnau?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collin?
Yes.
The board adopted ordinance 2014-02 on second reading.
Thank you.
Excuse me, may I interject? Just to go back to ordinance three, 2014, a first reading, I didn't provide a statement. So that ordinance will be...
Yeah, I move that the ordinance 2014-03 be scheduled for a second reading on February the 24th.
Uh, okay.
Forty-five days.
I'm gonna do the next one.
March.
March 10th.
No, they need 45 days.
Second one in March?
Second one in March.
March 24th.
March 24th, 2014.
Okay, motion by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner, all in favor? Any opposed, abstentions?
We're checking, it's 45 days. The March 24th, I guess you...
It's only 42.
It's 42 days.
It's only 42.
I mean, you could set it for then, but understanding that if the planning board has not met and reported back, then you'd have to carry it.
Yeah, I mean, they will. We're expecting them to not, to ignore it. Who knows? And then, and then so if we carry it, then basically we'll just do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you. Okay, and we have one table resolution?
Resolution 2013-246, a resolution selecting option for new rescue squad facility and authorizing a preparation of plans and specifications consistent therewith.
Okay. Mr. Rother?
Yes, I, I think that there should be a motion to take it off the table. And then if trustee wants to take further action, they'd be free to do so after that.
I move to take it off the table.
I second.
Okay, moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Collin, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, motion is off the table.
Move to strike.
Motion by trustee Rosner to strike this motion.
I second.
Seconded by trustee Davis Ford.
Can we have some discussion real quick?
Oh, sure.
I, I think we did that pretty abruptly without kind of sharing with the public a little backstory in what we're doing here. So if we can just cover a few things. One of the things that was referred to the Public Safety Committee was the consideration for emergency shelter. We worked with the village president, OEM coordinator, on discussing that memo. And so the committee is ultimately recommending against it. However, based on some of our closed session conversations, executive session, the board is moving in a different direction than what is currently in this resolution. So trustee Rosner's motion to strike it will result in a subsequent resolution coming at a further meeting, to be determined.
Thank you. So trustee Rosner had a motion to strike. So trustee Rosner had a motion to strike?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levison, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Okay. Resolutions on our consent agenda.
Resolution 2014-34, a resolution authorizing the village administrator and village purchasing agent to conduct, to conduct an internet auction. 2014-35, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with U.S. Sport Institute for tennis instructions beginning April 24th, 20, April 2014 through March 2015 with the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Resolution 2014-36, a resolution authorizing the village president to execute an agreement with Essex County for a 2014 municipal alliance grant for the prevention and education of alcohol and drug abuse. 2014-37, a resolution appointing trustee Mark Rosner as acting village president for a term of one year in the event of the village president's absence. Resolution 2014-38, a resolution of reappointing village council, special counsel for coa matters, special counsel for redevelopment matters, and the public defender pursuant to NJSA 48 colon 9 dash 139 and NJSA 48 colon 11 dash 5 for the January 1st, 2014 to December 31st, 2014 term. Resolution 2014-39, a resolution granting raffle license number 1244 to the youth orchestras of Essex County. This is an off-premise merchandise raffle. Resolution 2014-40, a resolution granting raffle license number 1245 to Temple Sherry Tefilo? I have it backwards, sorry. That's T E, Tepo, Tefilo, Israel. This is for an off-premise merchandise raffle. Resolution 2014-41, a resolution reappointing Thomas Machetti as the village's representative to the Essex County Solid Waste Advisory Council, also known as SWAC. Resolution 2014-42, a resolution reappointing trustee Howard Levison as the village's alternate representative to the Essex County Solid Waste Advisory Council. Resolution 2014-43, a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Medio's Concessions as the food service vendor for the South Orange Municipal Swimming Pool for calendar year 2014. Resolution 2014-44, a resolution requiring state and distribution based upon the School Fund Funding Reform Act, also known as FSRA. Resolution 2014-45, a resolution authorizing a filing of 2014 Essex County Open Space Grant Application.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any consent agenda items?
There's a big comment about number, sorry, about number 43, which is the pool concession, which, you know, back when I was on the, I think we only got one bid this year, if I'm not mistaken. But in every year, we always wonder why we don't get more bids and that stuff. I know when I was on RECP committee up till a year ago, we, I discussed the idea of other fixing the, the space up in the pool to make it more attractive for them, because it's, it's a very small concession stand, it makes it very difficult for concessionaires to come in there and make money. Never mind, it's very weather-dependent and time-dependent, and we actually thought when we expanded the pool season to Memorial Day, the weekends, bringing an extra three or four weekends in there, depending on the year, it may actually be more attractive. But we're still having problems getting bidders. And I think it's one of the things we're going to have to consider for our capital budget for 2015, obviously, is to expand that space and, or fix it up and make it more attractive to concession stands, if we want to take that to the next level and do away with the complaints that we've gotten in the past about it, how the board feels about it. But I would like the RECP committee to look into that.
So let me, we actually did, we did address that, so let me, I was going to speak about that, so, no, it's okay, it's good, because there was some concern about that, and actually there's been a switch. The last couple of years, there was, you know, some, some issues with that, but we're actually going back to the vendor who was running it several years ago. So the good news is that person does it, this is his full-time thing, so he's used to that, he is used to the space. He personally gets involved, he doesn't just hire outsiders, but he actually works it most, certainly on weekends and the busy days. So actually, the RECP committee is fairly happy that, that he's back in. It's true, there was only one bid, but he's eager to actually do this, it's his main, you know, one of his main pieces of business, so we're actually pretty happy that he's back. As long as I have the mic, the other topic that came in from, from RECP is order, resolution number 35. Here we had multiple bids, there were three bids for tennis instruction, and in this case, again, it's an incumbent, hopefully, the understanding was they were set good satisfaction with the tennis instruction this past year, so in this case, we went back to that, the United Sports Institute.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just back on, onto the pool, that we are, that supports all of the expanded activity that we put into place last year, Memorial Day and the extra evening.
As part of the requirements, that, that is the case. And what we would be looking for them to do, there were things like we would ask them to run specials, and, you know, it is, the space is small, so there's some limitation and constraints to trustee, to trustee Rosner's point. We may want to consider, it's something to, to look at, expanding that if we think there's a demand for that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, the question on 2014-45, and it's actually two questions. I guess the first one would be, was that discussed, the, I guess, the applications for the county library building roof? Was that discussed in any of the committees at all? And do we know if that amount of money is sufficient to repair the roof in its entirety?
Well, this is to the county open space trust fund. Not, not the village.
Okay.
Right, no, and, and, no, I mean, the, the short answer, that is not anticipated to be enough to repair it. In fact, the library had received the historic trust fund grant, planning grant from the state, had the architect complete the assessment, come up with the plan. I think the estimate of the roof flashing and all the repairs are closer to $300,000. The 150 was the cap on what you're allowed to apply for. And candidly, the, the options were either, you know, we, at least to my knowledge, don't have any parcels that we're eyeing for open space acquisition, so it was either going to be a recreation-type application or historic preservation. I think when we discussed it, both with the library and with RECP, the sense was that RECP already has plenty of projects on their plate at the moment, between the skate house and the duck pond and the bike paths, and, and there was still some questions on where we're going with Baird. So the thought was to, you know, use this application for historic preservation in connection with the canet, again, because it's a leaking roof, and the more it leaks, the more deterioration that happens. So the short answer is no, this wouldn't cover the entire cost, but it would obviously be a large chunk of it, so.
And is there, is there a deadline on the usage of that, of that project, that we have to put that in the next year to use?
Yeah, if, if awarded, I think the expectation is to have it completed by next year. But I, I think that's, that's more than realistic, the schedule and in conjunction with the architect, that, that wouldn't be an issue.
Thank you. And I did just see that the Board of Education President Beth Doherty is here, so I don't know if Ms. Doherty would like to say anything about, we're at our consent agenda right now, so perfect timing. If you just wanted to speak for just a second on the, on the resolution that we have regarding the School Funding Reform Act? Yep, that should be fine.
Beth Doherty, Board of Ed President, thank you very much for considering this resolution. Maplewood passed the same resolution, just with different statistics relevant to Maplewood. Last Monday, we passed a similar resolution on January 27th, and it's really requesting a review of the way the state aid is partially distributed. We all know that the funding formula hasn't been run in several years, so there is a method to the way that it's distributed, but it's very disadvantageous to us and a lot of other districts like us, and so we really just want to try to raise the awareness. We've reached out to other boards who are similarly disadvantaged, ask them to reach out to their municipal leaders to really get a momentum, going to ask for a review of the distribution so that it can be more equitable in the way it's divvied out. So thank you very much for considering this.
Yes, and if you have a question, if you'd like to?
Sure.
My question would be, is that I would like to perhaps maybe at the next meeting, invite you or a representative of the board to make a presentation regarding the budget, the numbers, and what it looks like for 2014, because we are in our budget process. We've already had two to three meetings regarding our budget for 2014, and because the school budget is more than half of the taxes for the residents, it would be appropriate and very beneficial in value to understand your numbers. So if I could make that request through you, Mr. President, that perhaps at next reading, we, meeting, we can schedule a presentation?
I don't know if it'll be ready at next meeting, we're in the process of?
But in the next couple of meetings?
Well, first of all, we have to have our, our discussion at the board level in a public meeting, so after we've had that.
Okay.
And really what it boils down to is, the administration presents the budget for submission to the board for discussion and approval. We approve a preliminary budget to submit to the county superintendent for approval that then comes back for our final approval. There's not much time in between our consideration of the budget and then that preliminary approval, and so we'll make sure that at some point during that period of time that we can come and speak to you. But I, I can say with pretty much guarantee that we will not be under a 2% increase in operating budget, that even with a 2% increase in our operating budget, we are facing a $2.8 million deficit. That's larger than the money we take in with a 2% increase. So our deficit is larger than our increase. So that's a lot of cuts that we're facing, very, very painful cuts this year that are really going to touch the classroom. And, you know, we've tried to avoid that in the past, and it's unavoidable this year.
Thank you.
Beth, a couple of questions, and it was funny that you walked in, because I was going to actually pull that and discuss it with the board. I appreciate the resolution, I almost think it's not strong enough. I think that the deficit that you're facing, we just finished our budget workshops, we're coming in at a very reasonable percent increase, but I don't think it really matters to the public if, on the Board of Education side, you guys are really struggling. What can the Board of Trustees do and, and our counterparts in Maplewood to better advocate on behalf of the Board of Education? Because I'm pretty certain all of us will do it. Where do you need the most help?
Well, I, I really think it's reaching out, I mean, the legislator, legislators have to approve the governor's budget. The governor doesn't come out with the budget and the state aid numbers until later in February, and it's once we hear those state aid numbers that we can finalize our budget. Right now, the Department of Ed is distributing, deciding, you know, how to allocate that state aid based on the off-formula funding that they're doing. So whether it's reaching out to the Department of Ed, reaching out to our legislators, but I think also just reaching out to other legislators, the Speaker of the House, the Senate President, the chairs of the different budget committees in both houses, the ones that are in charge of the appropriations, you know, the more we can reach out to say, look, the way funding is being distributed needs to be reviewed, that we, you know, we receive, I think it's 20% of the aid that the formula says that we need based on the, the needs of our students and our size and our ability to pay, then the formula caps that. So, you know, we're supposed to get $20 million in state aid, we get four, right? And the formula would cap it at seven, but we still get four. So, you know, it's like, we'll even take the capped amount, you know? It's like, you know, we get $4 million when that formula says we should be getting 20 based on our student population.
One of the things that trustee Clark, so I'm going to have to credit him with this, had brought up was, do we have any idea who the other towns are that are, are facing this challenge because they're very similar to South Orange and Maplewood? Is there a way that by numbers, we can mobilize with those Board of Educations and those municipalities and go at it together?
Yeah, one thing we're doing is reaching out to boards that are similar, Mr. Bennett, another board member, has done a lot of research looking for boards that are similarly disadvantaged by the formula, maybe not in the exact same categories, but overall based on their, you know, wealth and their students, population, and the aid they're getting. So we are reaching out to other boards. We can let you know which boards those are if you want to reach out to the corresponding municipal.
Anything we can do in terms of coordination, as I, as I said to Mr. Bennett also, when those budget hearings take place or there's committee hearings, I would, I would be more than happy to go as a representative of South Orange. I know my colleagues would, I'm sure the Board of Ed would be there, Maplewood as well. And the more that I know their safety in numbers and build some capacity, because this is very, very significant, the numbers that you ran and, and what we're looking at for the upcoming year. So, eh, just keep communicating with us, this is a good first step, and anything you need, you know, down the road, please rely on us, it's a good partnership.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments on any consent agenda items? Do I have a motion, please?
I move.
Moved, the consent agenda is moved by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. Could we have the roll, please?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
The consent agenda was approved.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Your favorite motion. Moved by trustee Rosner, seconded by trustee Levison, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The special meeting is adjourned. At this time, I would like to call to order the conference agenda of the Board of Trustees today, February 10th, at 8:56 PM. Could we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Cullen?
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Here.
Trustee Levison?
Present.
Trustee Rosner?
Here.
Trustee Schnall?
Here.
Village President Torpey?
Here.
Also present, Barry Lewis, village administrator, Stephen Rother, village council, Adam Lerner, deputy village administrator, myself, Chanel Smith. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the present accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board at 76 South Orange Avenue and on the village's website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may not be taken.
Thank you. So to start off, we're going to start with a, a presentation from Mitchell Fritz, who's the project manager for the Village Hall renovation project. And I think we've got, is there some media that we're doing? The projector here? No, nothing? Okay. And just, I also will say that this is going to be, hopefully, a good overview of the project. One of the things, yeah, you can come up. One of the things that we're also going to do is, in the next day or two, put a little more information on our website that details the, all the stuff that we've taken so far in the project, where we are in the project, kind of a condensed version of the presentation that you're giving tonight. Mr. Fritz, and we're going to put that up on the website, you know, for any member of the public to see, if that's a question that all of us have gotten at one time or another. Take it away.
Terrific, thanks for the, for the introduction. So my name, as President Torpey said, is Mitchell Fritz. I work for Jay Shapiro and Associates.
Just speak up a little, or can you move there?
Work for Jay Shapiro and Associates, we're out of Far Hills, New Jersey, and the village had retained us to act as construction managers, owners, reps for the rehabilitation effort undertaking, undertaken and underway at Village Hall. So tonight, I was asked to come and give the board a snapshot of where we are today and how, how we got here from the receipt of bids for the asbestos abatement contract. Bids were received to abate the asbestos in Village Hall on August the 8th. The Board of Trustees passed a resolution to award the contract on September 23rd last year, 2013. And thereafter, or concurrently underway at the time of the award, was an effort to relocate village offices off-site out of Village Hall. Village offices are currently at 76 South Orange Avenue. That move was completed and the offices opened on October 7th, 2013. A notice of award was issued to the winning contractor on October 10th by the village of 2013, and a project kickoff meeting was conducted on October 31st in village offices. At that time, the contractor had some administrative activities that he had to take, take care At that time, the contractor had some administrative activities that he had to take care of, including the application for and receipt of permits to do the work. The permits were issued by the village building department on November 18th, 2013. And thereafter, a notice to proceed with the work was issued by the village for the contract to start, contractor to start work effective November 25th. Thereafter, there were a number of items that precluded an aggressive start to the work, including some utility work that needed to be done, some relocation and removal of items from Village Hall that were, had remained behind, shutdown of nat, pardon me, natural gas inside the building, the draining and the domestic water system and the shutdown of the heating system. Probably, though, the most constraining item was that, in order to abate the asbestos in Village Hall, the existing underground electrical service needed to be shut off to the building, coordinating that with the utility. And in order to abate the asbestos, the contractor needs electricity. So the requirement is that then a new temporary service be brought in above ground and enter the building in a different location than the existing service comes into the building now. At present, we're projecting that the temporary electrical service can be turned on in Village Hall by February 24th. If that happens, then the contractor can start work the next day, and the contract provides that. Contractor has 60 days to complete the work of the abatement contract. The forecast then would be that the abatement contract would be complete April 25th. In order to give the board a forecast for the actual rehabilitation project, the timeline for the rehabilitation project, one would need to, the constraining issue is getting the asbestos abated. Now, when I say "abated," essentially that means that the inside of the building, all of the plaster on the walls and ceilings will be removed, and it'll expose the framing of the building inside, so that all of the unforeseen conditions that you would normally encounter in a rehabilitation project would be exposed. The village, together with their architect and my firm, made a decision to defer the completion of the rehabilitation design until the architect and the engineers could have an opportunity to view the inside of Village Hall in its post-asbestos-abatement state. The advantage of this is that then the designers would have the opportunity to see the things they wouldn't ordinarily be able to see and avoid the possibility of cost implications during construction that come from unforeseen conditions. So with that, I would look at the overall project milestones. I'm sorry, I should have said it earlier, but Mr. Lewis passed around a couple of handouts that I'm reading, the handouts that I'm reading from for your reference. And so the second piece, second piece of paper that I'm looking at is the overall project milestones. Provided that the abatement is complete and the building is cleared, and by cleared I mean that there's, the air testing shows that there's no asbestos in the air anymore, on April 25th, then the architect would be able to do his investigative walkthrough on the following Monday or Tuesday. In the following week, I'm carrying Tuesday, April 29th. Separate and apart from the asbestos abatement, the village made a decision to qualify prospective contractors for the rehabilitation work by applying to the NJDCA for permission to issue qualification questionnaires, requests for qualification, which the board previously reviewed and resolved with that process. The DCA has given their approval. And so now, at present, there's a formal request for qualifications out on the street where interested bidders can fill in their questionnaire and return those documents to the village and to have it reviewed by the architect and the village, pre-qualified bidders for the work. At present, the date for receipt of contractor qualification questionnaires is set at March the 5th. Those qualification packages come in and they go under the review of the architect. They're the entity that wrote the qualification requirements and questionnaire. Architect needs some time to review those qualification packages. The plan is to have the architect's recommendation in hand on March 21st and bring their recommendation in front of the board at the second meeting in March, March 24th. I have it. I'm not sure if I have that date right, but I think that's the right date. Provided that the board finds in favor of the architect's recommendations, a set list of pre-qualified contractors would then be notified after the board meeting that they met the requirements and would be then free to move on to the price, pricing phase of the contractor selection process. They would, the architect would then be able to send out those notices to the qualified contractors the end of the week following the board meeting, March 28th. And so now, at that point in time, the end of March, we would have a qualified field or roster of contractors that would be eligible to offer price proposals to do the rehabilitation work at Village Hall. That part of the process for the rehabilitation contract kind of gets paused at that point because the asbestos abatement work would still be going on. The next item I have in my milestones listing is that, following the abatement, the completion of the abatement and the architect's walkthrough at the end of April, they would then resume their work on the design, which is presently being paused. The design on the building right now could be characterized as being around 90 or 95% complete. But the architect has scrolled back their efforts to manage their time so that, once the building is exposed on the inside at the end of the abatement, they'll then resume work in earnest on the design, finalize the drawings, and get them ready to go out to bid. So I have the late, what I call the architect's late start date for the completion of 100% design documents, that's plans and specs, as being on or about May the 1st. Architect has indicated that he's going to need a month to finish those drawings, so that puts drawing completion and spec completion at around Monday, June the 2nd. Then there's a review cycle. Make sure that those drawings are correct and adequate and competent. My office reviews, the owner, the owner's personnel would review the architect's drawings and make sure they're correct. We'd have a review conference, conversation, dialogue, back and forth with the architect, make sure that whatever issues we raise, that they're going to address them adequately. If there needs to be a rep publication cycle, then there would be. The goal is at 100% that most of the bugs have been worked out by that time, so I don't anticipate a prolonged, what should I say, correction period. Right now, I'm carrying the date for putting the actual drawings and specs out to bid to qualified contractors, previously qualified contractors, as being June 24th. Again, through the process, the pre-construction process that I've been involved with, it's been discussed and we've decided that the appropriate amount of time to give contractors the opportunity to develop competent bids would be on the order of 45 days. So I'm carrying a bid opening date of, pardon me, August the 8th. In that time, between the time that the drawings are finished and they're moved out to bid, there would be a contractor's walkthrough. There would be an opportunity for contractors' questions to be received, and the answers published in the form of an addendum to the contract. There's bidding rules and regulations that affect the timing of how, how much time you need to give contractors after the issuance of the last addendum and still maintain the bid date. I have those dates listed in the milestone listing here. But essentially, what it translates to is a bid received date of August the 8th. The bids are then reviewed, and there's a period of time that's needed for that review, so I anticipate bringing the recommendation for an award of contract before the board at the second meeting in August, which is, I believe, August 25th, Monday. Thereafter, the village would be free to issue a notice of award to the successful contractor next business day or thereafter. I'm carrying Wednesday, August 27th. Now, if you notice in my accounting of the events that took place in the asbestos contract, there was a gap of more than a week between notice of award and notice to proceed to the asbestos contractor. I'm carrying a week here. I hope that it does, that's what it takes us to do, to issue the notice to proceed. So barring any unforeseen occurrences, let's say that we give the contractor a notice to proceed on September the 3rd, that projects a substantial completion certificate of occupancy date for the Village Hall on or about October 8th, 2015. For construction purposes, generally carry a 60-day period after the achievement of substantial completion for the contractor to finish punch list items and de minimis items of the work, for him to get in his closeout documents and so on and so forth. That same 60-day period would be used to move in fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, to bring in the window blinds or file cabinets and desks and so on and so forth, so there's to prepare Village Hall for move-in thereafter. With the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy, the village would be able to count the space as habitable space, so I imagine that there's going to be a staged or a phased move-in. I don't expect everybody to move into the building all in the same day. Perhaps by that time, we could coordinate the planning of a soft opening and phase that return back to Village Hall and exit out of the leased space on 76 South Orange Avenue. So that's basically the timeline. Right now, contractors have shown what I'd say, what I'd count as significant interest in the requests for qualifications. I understand at last count that there were about 15 sets of questionnaires that were received by contractors either directly from the village offices here in South Orange or from the architect's office in Princeton. The architect is going to conduct a pre-qualification contractor conference later this week. It was postponed from last week due to weather. Hopefully, the weather won't affect this schedule. In any event, that's to familiarize the contractors with the, you know, the early view of Village Hall and the nature of the work. That conference could result in questions, which would then have to be answered by the architect via an addendum, and that addendum, depending on when it's issued, could affect the received date for qualification packages, pardon me. So March 5th right now is the target date for receiving qual packages from contractors. The goal and the hope is to have a field of contractors that is well-versed in historic rehabilitation, renovation, preservation, and to generate interest in contractors that the village will have the opportunity to vet for competency and so forth. So I know I ran through that rather rapid fire, but that's the, basically the snapshot of where we are and the forecast of how long it's going to take to get to the point where we actually have rehabilitation, renovation work going on in Village Hall. By all, by all measures and by all thinking, both in our office and at the architect's office, it was agreed that there would be a 400-day, 400 calendar day period for the general contractor to do the rehabilitation work. It's about 13 months, which is less time than was originally forecast when our firm was engaged. So even though it feels as though the schedule might be slipping from the time I first came before the board, when we look at the whole timeline, the slippage hasn't really been that great. It just feels, just feels a little, little longer. Yes, sir?
The temporary electrical service, which still has to happen for the asbestos abatement to get to the next step.
Yes.
Which is scheduled to be done by February 24th.
Right.
That's based on PSCNG, given this number, estimates, or is that just based on average time that it usually takes them?
No, it's actually based on information we got from PSCNG. In order to, to bring in a new service to the building, the temporary electrical service, as we're calling it, and by the way, the temporary electrical service is going to remain in place through the conclusion of the rehabilitation. It will be used for both the asbestos removal and the general contracting work. But in any event, we started, Public Service first came to survey the building to see where they could bring in temporary power and where they could source it and what they had to do in order to turn off the existing power to Village Hall on December the 6th. In the interim, there were a number of steps that had to be taken through different departments at Public Service, which resulted in the April 24th date. Now, the April 24th date is a counting of time from an administrative toggle that happened last Friday. I'm told that from last Friday, that we're going to take between 10 and 14 days. So that's how I get to April 24th. It's conceivable that a significant snow event could divert resources, in which case, let's just say this, we don't have a date from Public Service. We have, we have an estimate of how long it takes from last Friday. So it's conceivable that another storm event could affect the date adversely, or it could happen tomorrow. The, because of the nature of the asbestos work, the asbestos removal work, and the need for power in the building, there was an agreement that was concluded between village, the village and the contractor that the time for counting for the removal of the asbestos wouldn't start until they had free access to the work vis-à-vis that they had power. So that's why you don't see a lot going on over at Village Hall. They did mobilize into the building. They brought some general conditions items, dumpsters, they brought some items into the building, but they really weren't free to advance the work without the temporary power. And they weren't free to do a lot of the work that maybe could have been done with the existing permanent power in place because of safety issues that had to do with the existing permanent power in the basement. There's, there are regulations that are triggered when we're doing asbestos work that require, that impact the power in the building or are impacted by the power in the building. So I know it's long-winded and a little bit more than you asked, but the April 25th is a date that I counted from-
Okay.
-from a date that Public Service said it would take.
You answered the question, plus, actually, plus the follow-up question, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions?
Other questions?
Are there any additional comments from the administration on the project that might be beneficial to the public?
No, I think, again, as Mr. Fritz alluded to, the overall, because ultimately they reassessed the timeline for the construction, that did absorb. I would say that certainly Mr. Fritz and his firm have been extremely diligent in pursuing this, including working with the asbestos abatement firm and really, I guess, furthering some of the things that one would have expected. But, you know, it is unfortunate that some of these delays have kicked in, and particularly with PSCNG. But we're working diligently to get it done. I've reached out to Everton Scott. He has made some calls to try and get things moving along. We'll continue to do that. I'm optimistic that once we get through this phase, the second phase, I think there won't be as many, you know, again, the building will be gutted, all the water's already shut off, all the temporary power's already in. So all these other sort of glitches that are dependent on other outside agencies will already be behind us. So at least I think that we have a, you know, maybe a better sense of confidence in going forward once that point, because again, so many of these early steps were dependent on the gas, you know, PSCNG on the gas, PSCNG on the electric. There were some issues with the EP and the methods that the abatement contractor wanted utilized in getting a variance. So again, I would just like to thank Mitch for all his hard work. He does a really fantastic job. And we're, you know, I think we're committed to keeping it as tight on schedule. Again, budget-wise, there is, you know, until you get the bid, the largest single piece of the puzzle is outstanding. So I think whenever, whatever the date on here is that we get the bids, that'll be the magic date in terms of knowing really where we sit. But everything I think and everybody is doing as much as possible to make sure that the costs are controlled, that the process moves as quickly as possible, and we'll hopefully just stay on track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Again, we'll get some of this information up on the website in a kind of easy-to-read and easy-to-follow format so people can track the progress and where we're at.
Yeah, and I would say that was part of the thinking initially when we got these. The thought was if we put this up on the screen, nobody'd be able to read it because there's so much on there. But we will have, have stuff up on the website hopefully by tomorrow for the public to see the milestone schedule and some of these additional, you know, piece of information.
Thank you.
I do have just one last question regarding the timeline. The document that we're seeing still sees this being- still sees this being completed by fourth quarter 2015, and that was what was indicated the last time there was a presentation to the public. Are we pretty confident that, that timeline?
Again.
Still, I, I know we had some changes with the asbestos abatement. There's, you know, a lot of things going on in the middle of the timeline, but the end date is still relatively the same.
The end date is, is similar. I, I think it has, you know, pushed back maybe a month or two. As Mr. Fritz alluded to, part of that was, I think, when Mitch's firm and the architect really sat down and looked at the scope of work and came up with the estimated timeframe. Some of the preliminary ones, that I think the actual construction contract was significantly longer than the four-hundred days. I certainly defer to the professionals. They believe that's a realistic amount of time to do, knowing what they now know is the scope of work. And the other part is while we were experiencing some delays with the abatement, some of that was overlapping some parallel timeframes in terms of the pre-qualification that had to happen anyway, so some of that was sort of absorbed. But I, and I defer to Mitch, but I, I think based on all the information currently available, and of course, subject to PSCNG getting that temporary power on, and, and the abatement contractor completing within their sixty days, I think the rest of it is, is the best, you know, professional opinion that, you know, our experts have to give us, so I have confidence in it. I don't know if you want to add to that, Mitch, or?
Sure. I second what Barry said. But I think the last, if I remember correctly, the last time I came before the board, the schedule had the project completing, I want to say around October of two fifteen, two oh fifteen. The, the constraining date now is, and it always has been, is, was always going to be the first day. The village hired a separate designer, because of the nature of the work, had to hire a separate designer to do the asbestos abatement design. And because of the nature of the work, we had to segregate the asbestos abatement from a typical general contractor. General contractors ordinarily aren't insured and, or, not, I don't want to say not qualified, but on paper, their, their area of expertise isn't asbestos abatement, so they don't, they don't do, they don't participate in that part of the business. So it became clear that we had to segregate the asbestos abatement from the general construction work. When, when that came into view, it then be, it then presented the opportunity for our designers to not finish the design of the rehabilitation project until they had the opportunity to get inside the building and see the skeleton of the building. So we're always, the, the longest path to receiving bids was always going to be through that date.
Mm-hmm.
So the net number of days that we quote-unquote "lost," if you want to count them as lost, have been the number of days since November twenty-fifth until February twenty-fifth, which, which shows up as being the difference between completing in October and completing in December.
Mm-hmm.
You're right. We still, we still complete in the fourth quarter of 2015. There's, to, to speak to your question about how accurate is that, that's as accurate as we could be about forecasting something that far out on, on any topic. There's a lot that has to happen between now and then, and there's a lot that could happen. The best practices, however, dictate that at each step along the way, we, we collectively, the village, its consultants, its general contractor, as filters down to their subs, and so on, all exercise attention and diligence and control on the schedule. Sometimes, schedules, but sometimes schedules pick up as well. And there's going to be some ebb and flow between now and when we deliver the building to the village so that you can move in and conduct business there. I'm fairly confident that, from where I stand today, that these numbers represent a realistic schedule. Now, that's not to say that something that none of us know about today won't happen and won't have an effect on the schedule, but, you know, it's just as likely that something might happen that would improve the schedule too. If the architect gets in the building, posts asbestos and says, "No, we see everything the way we thought we were going to see it. We've nailed this thing, and we can tie a bow on the plans and specs today, and we don't need a month to make the final adjustments in the plans and specs," well, then we can give the pricing packages to contractors earlier. And I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but I'm saying it's one of the, one of the universe of possibilities. So if there's a way to better the schedule, we'll do it. I think everybody that's involved in the project so far understands that for every day that you're out of Village Hall, you're paying for leased space.
Mm-hmm.
So we all recognize that, and I certainly have been attentive to it. And all I can say is, at least while I'm chairing the meetings, everybody's going to be reminded of the schedule every time.
Thank you.
Thanks for the questions. Thanks for the opportunity.
Mr. President, back to you. You said earlier that we could expect something on the website.
Yep.
Within the next couple of days.
Day tomorrow or the day after.
You're certain of that?
Yeah.
Okay. And these documents, I was a little surprised that we didn't have them on the projector, and that was a lot that, that he just went through. So I don't know if this is what you were intending to post, or some modified version.
It was going to be a modified version of this. That's just going to outline the, the bigger steps in the process.
Okay.
I mean, we can go through this, Mr. Lewis and I, tomorrow, and basically, we don't want to list every single line. I mean, that's just, I think, going to be too much, but just to give people an idea of where we are in the project. And then if they want more information, each section will have a little description about what that section is.
And if you can also include, and I had requested this a little while ago, it's just the different votes, the various steps that the board has taken historically, the authorizations of the bonds, the grants that we received.
Yeah.
Just kind of like finance.
Yeah, that's going to take a minute to get all that, so we might put this stuff up first.
I think the intention is to, and we kind of joked about this today, is when do you start the timeline? And the intent is to start it back at those early decisions, not back to when it started being discussed a decade ago.
I think that was nineteen ninety-two.
But, but from when, you know, the sort of the commitment was made with the funding, and, and start from that point forward and go through all the steps and all the major milestones that has occurred. And, and I think, I mean, certainly, there, there's nothing, these documents, I, I don't have any objection to having these also accessible for anyone who really wants to dig into the details, but I think the idea was to put a much, you know, sort of more simplistic, straightforward, quick glance.
Something a little more user-friendly.
Somebody can look at, I mean, these can be available. There's no, there's nothing secret.
What we could do, because we're going to be consolidating all that on one page, that will just have all the information there, is we can just upload any documents we have to that page, and then if someone wants to dig a little deeper and actually look through the documents, they can do that. And for someone who just wants to see the overview, they could also just do that.
Right.
So we could kind of do everything easily enough.
The other thing, if you could put, just put it all on the record, there was also the study that the village commissioned to look at alternative uses for Village Hall. I think that stuff is very important for anybody who might want to dive into it. Now that I'm on the board, you know, that used to be me, but for anybody who does want to look at.
We'll go back and, and look at the major, like, documents that have been produced and those up there, too.
Okay. So definitely by.
That would be one of them.
Within the next couple of days, we're good.
And then, and then, and then, at any point, I mean, when, when, once we put that up, we'll send it out to everybody, and then if there's things that you guys see that you say, "Hey, you know, there shouldn't be this document too," well, I mean, we'll just add that.
No, and, and that, I just want to be clear. And within the next couple of days, at a minimum, we will have, you know, these documents, sort of that.
Right.
Basic milestones. As far as up, you know, finding this study for alternative use, you know, that may take a little longer. I, I haven't even seen it myself, but.
If it is helpful, I'll just throw it on a flash drive. I created a Village Hall folder with, like, all the documents. There's, like, forty of them.
That would be very helpful.
And you can pick and choose, but I, I was trying to put all of them together.
That would be very helpful.
So I have it ready for you.
Terrific.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so on to the reports. I have a quick report. One is just, the next meeting will be the first inaugural meeting of the Village President for a Day program. The young woman who is here with her father that was sitting in the audience before, they left, they made it pretty far in.
Pass her baton, right?
What's that?
She presided already.
Yeah, exactly. And so she will be opening up the meeting tomorrow and presiding over the beginning part of the meeting. And basically.
Tomorrow?
No, sorry.
The next one.
The next meeting. Yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow. You're not going to be there. And, and so she'll be opening up the meeting, leading the pledge of allegiance, going through some other steps. Depending on how the agenda shapes up ahead of time, I assume it's okay with everybody, that if there is an ordinance that is like, kind of a housekeeping ordinance, nothing controversial, but something that's not a big deal, is I'm going to move it all the way up to the beginning and let her preside over actually us passing an ordinance. That might be kind of fun. So obviously, I don't want to do it if there's going to be some big controversy, but if there is something that's kind of a smaller thing, or maybe a risk.
Is that legal?
That there's just some action, you know, that she can sort of preside over. That would be great. And then, and then, what we'll do each month, because there are nine school months of the year, and we conveniently have nine schools in our school district, each month will be a kid from a different school who'll come in, and they'll either do that here in the board meeting, or hopefully when the weather gets nicer, although those tend not to be the school year months, is they could also come do a ribbon cutting. I need to look into whether they can help me officiate a wedding, or anything like that. But it's basically any of the things that I go out and do in the community or here, to take a student along and have them basically perform that activity. And I think the alternative press is going to write something about each of the students when they do those, which should be really fun. So I'm really looking forward to it. The family's excited. The teachers are excited. I think some of the other classmates are going to come out. And so this is just, you know, a really fun way to get some of the kids out to our meetings.
That's great.
And making you not the youngest person here, a joke I'm sure I'll make at that point, too. I'm the only one I've got. So.
Got nine months.
What's that?
Nine months.
Yeah, right. You guys better get used to that.
It's always nice to have your classmates come.
There we go. We'll turn it over to.
Oh, that was awesome. Nice one, Trustee Rosner.
Maybe we'll have the police chief come in and.
There you go.
Oh, yes.
The kids will never come back. Anyway, so anyway, so that's something I had mentioned in the last meeting, but we're going to go ahead and do that, and they were here tonight just to, you know, kind of see what the meeting was like and get comfortable with it. Also, just public stuff and the three-one-one. I made the announcement earlier also, and just for all the trustees as well, you know, so we kind of did this soft launch where we put it out there. We haven't done like a huge push as far as getting people more signed up into it. We have a bunch of email addresses from our old system. Some of them are signed up for only emergency notifications. Some are signed up for more general announcements. We're going to do some more proactive reaching out in the next couple of weeks, once some of the kinks are worked out, and, and send that out to people and try and get, we are seeing people sign up, and hopefully what we'll be able to do, once we do that, is, you know, once a month, or the thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, or something, you know, we'll, I'll bring some statistics into the board meetings and talk about, you know, how many people have signed up, how many submissions there have been. We've gotten a lot of good ones. We've gotten a couple, a couple of people who, a little spamers.
You know, one of, one of the places where we get a lot of people is at the Baird Center, especially when they sign up for the rec badges, and it might be good to hand them a flyer right then and there, or see if they can sign up, because that's five thousand.
We will do that. Yeah, we'll, we'll, you know, what we'll do is we'll put some flyers up in all the library, the Baird Center, all the, all the town buildings. And when it's nice out, too, what we can do, you know, at all the concerts over the summer and things like that, we can always make the announcement. I mean, it's easy to do, right? Everybody's there. Take, take out your cell phone, SO Connect, download the application. So we'll, you know, continue to do the outreach for that. But so far, we've gotten pretty positive feedback from residents. I don't know, you know, what you guys have heard or not, but most people I know have found it relatively easy to use and appreciate the opportunity, you know, that this exists. And we'll kind of see, you know, how it goes as far as it being used. The only thing is that sometimes, especially with the snow removal, we have to figure out some way to set people's expectations that, you know, if they submit a request, they don't hear, you know, they're not going to get a comment back in five minutes from the department director saying, "We're working on it." And so we just have to make sure to define those workflows, because there is a way for the department head to mark it received. So that's a notification that goes back. So we just have a few things like that to work out. But overall, happy with it and still just working out a couple of last kinks.
Do we have, quick question. Do we have any idea on numbers? How many people have submitted requests?
We could, we could look up, I could probably pull it up here. I was going to do that for the next.
I didn't bring it. I actually ran it today. It's well over a hundred already, and it's been barely, you know.
No, that's good.
What's that, Tommy?
Tommy's by far the leading recipient of them.
Is it, is it that we have a lot of frequent flyers, or is it like, do we know how many users there are, or the same people taking advantage of it?
Well, there's, well, there's a few people that are spamming it, and then there's, and I don't think we're counting those in that number.
No, these are legitimate.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then there's, there's definitely, I think what we're going to see is a core group that you're going to see, maybe not, it's not going to be like the ninety-nine-one rule, maybe something like that, where there's going to be a small number of people, you know, who are submitting most of them. But, but so far, I mean, it's not like there's five people and it's only come from them.
No, there, there's a fair number of, I think, unique users, but there also are, you know, a fair number of people that have submitted multiple requests. And, and I think that's part of the process, and getting the information out there, getting people used to it. So, because once somebody has used it, they know how it works, then they start using it again and continue to use it. So one thing I would just echo, obviously, we certainly would ask anyone out there to not abuse it and not put in fictitious or sarcastic. It's a tool, it's a tool that's intended to help the efficiency of the operations, help the citizens. Every request gets routed to a particular department head, so if your intent is to make light of something, or make a joke, or embarrass somebody, it's not even going to perhaps the target of your, what you're trying to do, and instead it's wasting the time of a department head that has far better things to do. And then the other sort of minor point, which is not, I don't think ill-intended, but it is not a system that works on the squeaky wheel. We have had some instances where the same individual submits the same request repeatedly. And so I would just stress to people that, you know, once it's submitted, it, it is in the queue, and you will get an email back acknowledging it's in the queue, and it will be addressed, and submitting it five more times is not going to speed that up.
No.
And again, that will also just waste people's time.
From a technical perspective, if people want to check up on the status of something, they can go to the request and comment on it. You know, if you don't hear back in a couple of days, go to the same request and comment on that request and say, "Hey, I haven't heard anything." That's, that's the right way.
And that stays within the same request, rather than have the same request repeated.
Trustee Colm, I'm just looking at the number of users here, and subtracting a couple of the ones that we know are spam. There's about fifty users that have signed up.
One of the things.
Most of them have submitted two, one or two requests, and then five have submitted three or four.
How do you identify who's, who's spamming, who, or who is a troll?
Anonymous.
Well, it's not anonymous. We have their email address. They've put their email addresses in. So the email addresses are all here. We know, you know, the names of the people.
And I'm just playing devil's advocate. If someone is misusing the service, is there a way to block them, or?
Yeah.
What's the process?
There's a couple of different ways that you can do that. And I think one of the things that we've talked about doing, and Mr. Rottman, this is something I actually forgot to mention, bring up with you today, but one of the things that Public Stuff actually suggested as a way to deal with spam is for us to create a Terms of Service. And so every time someone signs up for an account or submits something, they just have to check a box. And I actually thought Public Stuff had their own Terms of Service, but basically they check a box saying, "I agree to the Terms of Service." In the Terms of Service that says, "You are not allowed to do this." And then if there really is someone who is continuing to do this, as there seem to be one or two people, you know, then maybe then there's, there's some legal recourse, you know, if they have agreed at that point not to violate a Terms of Service, and they've checked that off and said that they won't, and then they continue to do so. So I'll follow up with you after the meeting about that, but.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's only a couple of people. Ever, most people are using the system the right way, and.
Then finally.
This has been awful.
Finally, what is the marketing plan to, as far as outreach, to let people know?
So, so it's continuing what we've been doing and then kind of stepping up a little bit. So it's in the local media, and the alternative press has written a little bit about it so far. And hopefully, we'll, with, you know, maybe when we get to a point of, you know, a hundred users, or a thousand things submitted, or something, we can send over a little press release and see if someone will write something about it. You know, we also, and everybody here needs to make sure to keep up to date on the South Orange Facebook and Twitter, because that is going to be a place where, you know, I posted something today, and I really, all you guys should be going, every time you see something from the South Orange Facebook page, all of us should be liking all of that and making sure that it's getting, because each of us have, you know, good networks out there. So just make sure to look out for that stuff from the South Orange Village page.
Okay.
So that's one, is promoting through the social media accounts. The other is going back to that email list that I mentioned. And then the other is each of us promoting it. I know, you know, I'll send to my own email list, and we can all circulate on our personal pages and personal networks. And maybe one of the things we can do is also reach out to all the neighborhood associations as well, directly, and have them distribute out. And same with Neighborhood Watch. So we'll identify some community groups.
I think that would be an excellent idea.
And do that. And between all of that, we should get pretty good saturation. And then, you know, over the summer, as we have events, we'll continue to just bring it up with people, remind them.
Okay, thank you.
One of the other things that we've talked about, and we'd like Adam to comment on, on a couple of the other issues. We said that we may want to produce a video that we can put up on the website.
Yes.
Which walks through, basically, how to use it, and all of the increase, all of the details of how to put in a. all of the details of how to, uh, put in a, a complaint, or a complaint.
Does Public Stuff not already have like a YouTube video that...
They've got some how-to videos, but we, we can do one, because it'll, and then it'll be with our branding and stuff. Um, it's pretty easy. I, I did one a while ago, but I'll, I'll do it again. It's, you know, it's easy to do a screencast. Um, we'll put those up there.
The, the other is that, um, we've had a, a discussion about responding to the, uh, actual, uh, complaint that comes in about how you go about, uh, responding to them, or if there isn't a response, if you want to make a comment to that.
So what we're trying to do is address each situation as quickly as possible. Depending on the type of request, uh, for example, a missing sign, uh, a department head will not, per se, go in and comment and say, "I've replaced the sign, it's in working order." He'll just go to the complete section, mark it as complete, and then move on. Uh, with the numbers that we're getting, what we're trying to do is complete as many things as possible, and really only comment when we need to have a question, or there's something specific we need to communicate to the resident.
And when that person marks it complete, the resident does get an email back saying, "Your request has been marked complete." So it just makes it a little easier for the department head.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Cool. Um, and, uh, yeah, so everybody, and at some point, what we can definitely do, I may regret saying this, but, um, you know, we can, we can kind of keep track of points based on how many people submit how many things. So, Citizen of the Year, whoever submits the post, Tommy's going to kill me.
Yeah. Why don't you think that through before you make a statement?
Um, so we'll award Citizen of the Year for some other metric.
Well, the, the other thing that we want to do, as we develop, or people start, uh, have responding to the categories, we will set certain targets...
Absolutely.
...and establish a, a, a measure for the department on how they're responding to these, uh, various complaints.
Yeah, thank you, Trustee Levison. That's one of the things that we had discussed in all of our planning meetings, which is actually going to be my next point to bring up, um, is that we want to have more metrics to measure our performance. And once we start doing these things, like you said, we'll start to get an idea of how long it does generally take, and then we can start to work on that.
Right, and it will be part of a performance evaluation, as well for the staff.
Yeah. Um, okay, so the next thing I wanted to say was, uh, we haven't had a vision planning meeting in a while. Um, I would love to do that. I think I've talked to that, about, maybe one or two of you. Um, so if, uh, everybody's on board with that, at some point in the next four to six weeks, um, we'll send out a doodle poll and just get people's availability, um, to do maybe two or three hours, um, and spend a little bit of time talking about our goals for the year. Is that cool with everybody?
Yeah.
You're going to send out a doodle poll?
Yeah, yeah, yep. We'll do a doodle poll. Um, and the, the only last thing I was going to do, uh, I just had a note, Mr. Lewis, just to ask you, um, to just give a brief overview from our budget workshop the other night?
Yeah, it's on there.
Okay.
It's under his.
And, um, uh, one of the things that I, I did want to make sure to do bef, well, I'll, I'll hold off on that. Um, so why don't we just kick it over to you?
Okay, um, when I, I did want to just follow up and echo on the public stuff. Um, the other thing that we've, as we've started to get populated with some requests, we have the opportunity to now to start using some of the report functionality. And, uh, it does have, uh, you know, some really good tools, and eventually, soon enough, we'll share them, uh, with the board in terms of the types of reports we could run, uh, to gauge your interest in what you might like to see, and, and with what type of regularity. But you can sort them by departments, you can sort them by, uh, staff activity, which will show you when and what was closed, and when, what, you can sort them by service types, you can sort them by... So, that's interesting. The other point, um, was, we will also be, you know, we haven't really gone aggressively on this, because we're working on so many of the other things and easing this in, but, um, the hope is that there's an opportunity to utilize this internally as well. Uh, one is sort of internally, but at the same time externally, we actually are, have implemented it, and are using this for IT requests from Maplewood, uh, under the inter-local services contract that we started in January, and I was going to touch on that a little bit later. But, um, Maplewood is actually using Public Stuff to put in their IT requests to our IT department, and thus far, that seems to be really working out well and a good way to, to communicate, so... So then next, uh, yeah, for the, the public that did not have the benefit of attending, or otherwise, uh, it's not televised, we did hold our second budget workshop, uh, last week. Um, presented the budget, um, on behalf of the village president and the administration. Um, we are presently, as currently, uh, set up and proposed, we would continue to provide, uh, all the same services, same staffing levels, and the tax levy, the tax rate increase is just below 1% at .97. Um, the impact on the average assessed homeowner is about $43. So we are, uh, you know, you'd always like to have zero, but I think it's realistic, and we're, uh, I think, pretty pleased with the progress we made. It's a credit, uh, to, I think, the, first the board and the village president for, uh, all of your efforts in, in, you know, utilizing and taking advantage of opportunities to save money, to run more efficiently. Uh, a credit to the workforce and the staff for all the work they do, uh, in many instances, doing more with less, uh, but also thinking smarter, buying smarter, working more efficiently. So, um, it, it continues a trend of reducing our, um, tax rate increases. I think over the last three years, we were about 1.7, then about 1.4, and, and now, I think, for the first time in as long as anyone can remember, below 1%. So, um, very encouraging. Um, on the capital end, we have identified a lot of key projects that we want to get done, but also, uh, as currently proposed, we are continuing the trend over the last two years of, um, ensuring that we do not authorize more debt than we are paying down, uh, and start trying to reverse that trend and, and stop the debt from growing and start, start cutting it down. So this will be, uh, the third year in a row where we pay off more debt than we authorize new debt. So, again, I think that's a positive step, a credit to, uh, this board, the prior board, uh, certainly Chairman Levison of the Finance Committee, who has been, uh, a real watchdog on this. And, uh, I think that will ultimately serve the residents well. The more we can get our debt under control, reduce it, that's less that we have to, our debt service component of our budget becomes smaller, uh, that helps us to maintain and stabilize the tax rate. So, uh, all in all, I think very positive. I'm hopeful that, uh, we'll be in a position to actually introduce the budget in March, um, hold the public hearing and have it adopted in April, which will be, uh, certainly the earliest it has been in quite a while. So, um, that's encouraging.
Uh, regarding the budget, I have a couple of questions or comments. One is that, in the budget hearing, I asked at the end if you could just, and it may be challenging, because we don't know exactly what that, uh, the school's, uh, numbers are going to be, which is a significant part of the budget and the largest part of our, the overall budget for the residents. But I asked if you could just, um, get, send to all the Board of Trustees what the overall rate, uh, for the residents, so that in talking to residents, you know, it's nice that we're under 1%, but that's only 26, 27, 28% of the overall tax burden that each resident, you know, will experience. But, I know as soon as he can, you know, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and what I was going to say was, we had that discussion, but I think what I can do, at least certainly based on what, um, Ms. Doherty said tonight, uh, I guess operate on the assumption they're going to have a 2% increase, which is what she indicated.
Right.
Uh, I could at least project that number, you know, based on last year's levy, figure this year's levy. Uh, I think we have the county, or I can get the county number in now, plug in our number, and then we can...
And I have that information, because of the county budget hearing, they, they're going to come in at 1.5, the same as they did last year, and that would be an additional $180,000 levy, uh, above last year. And last year, uh, it was, uh, for the overall village, it was $12,41,000, uh, let's say $42,000. And, and so with that additional $108,000 at the 1.5, uh, increase, it should be about, uh, $12,223,000, give or take. And I'm going to pass this out. I think this is interesting. It's a visual, a pie of the whole levy based on 2013, and you can see at a glance the school levy, the county levy, the municipal levy, even the library levy in the open space. So this is a pie chart visual that gives you the budget as a whole, and it's a really, really good visual tool.
Thanks, Senator.
That's helpful, and, and so as I say, I can relatively quickly, uh, provide that information. It would just have sort of an asterisk by the school saying, "projected based on 2%." Um, and we can do that, and, and I think, um, to your point, and particularly when you look at the visual and you see how much of the pie is, comes out of the school board, um, I, I think it underscores the importance, I think of Trustee Column's comments earlier of, of that we're all in this together, and what can we do to address these funding formula issues and some of these other things? Because, um, to get real control and relief for the residents, um, as much as we do, until we can help and get that school number under control...
It's a good start, and this is almost like, uh, being Sisyphus, if you understand, or remember your Greek mythology, but I won't bore anybody with that. But, that, the way to really, um, get this under control as far as controlling taxes is really just a different model on how we, uh, fund schools. And, and, you know, I, I would love to be able to have a conversation, maybe at the state level, or, uh, whatever appropriate, to see if there's any other model where schools are funded other than based on property taxes. Maybe with a, uh, a, a state levy where it's spread across everyone, including renters, residents, where everyone, uh, shares in the burden, which would reduce that significant burden on the backs of property owners. But that's a whole nother, uh, challenge. Um, I have another, uh, question or concern, and this just came to my attention, you know, being involved in the county budget, and they prepared a reserve to, uh, manage a significant hit, if they weren't prepared for, in the 27th payroll. Um, I think that we, we are based on the bi-weekly pay, where there's 26 pay, pay periods in a year, and so is the county. And every, uh, periodically, I don't...
Every seventh year.
Every seventh year, there's an extra...
Which is for us, it's next year.
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
So, and that's, if you're not prepared for it, it's a real hit.
Yeah, and, um...
So are we preparing?
What Trustee Davis Ford is referring to, when you're on a 20, every two-week pay period, um, six years in a row, you have 26 pay periods during a year, and every seventh year, you have a 27th pay. And if you have not planned for it, and you have annual salaries, and you divide them, as you always do, by 26, and you pay, and you'll get to that last pay, and you won't have any money. Um, we are certainly aware of it. Um, I've encountered in other towns what I've done, and, and I think with the preference, and I was going to touch on later, our, our new CFO, and I will, but, uh, you know, I share the belief in what we'd like to do is get to a, um, twice-a-month pay, 15th and 30th, uh, for a variety of reasons, one of which is to avoid that, so, um, but we're aware of it. Our seventh year is not this year, it's next year.
Okay.
So we will have a plan in place, one way or another, whether we transition to a, uh, bimonthly, or if not, there's a couple of different options. You can, you can push that first pay back a week, and you basically kind of restart the clock artificially, or you can divide salaries and things by 20s. Obviously, with hourly, they get paid based on the hour, so it doesn't matter. But on the salaried employees, the alternative is to divide by 27. That's not always as, um, desirable by the employees, because they're going to get less, or, you know, and some of them, you know, you tell them and you add it all up, you get the same amount during the year. It doesn't, it doesn't always go over that well, but, uh, we're aware of it, and we're on top of it, and we, uh, but, uh, I appreciate you pointing it out.
Yeah, that was a real concern, so when I had an understanding of that, I said, "Oh, wow, are we ready? Are we prepared?" And thank you for that.
Sure, thank you. Um, so the next thing I wanted to just touch upon was, um, uh, our project at Third and Valley. Uh, we are really, um, beginning to head down the home stretch. Um, Jonathan Rose, as you're all aware, previously got their approvals from the planning board. Uh, they've submitted their plans to, because of the class of use and certain things, um, and the parking deck plans have gone to DCA for construction permit review. Uh, it's my understanding those have, the, the deck plans have been released. Uh, they come back then to South Orange Dark Construction Office, who, who does their review, and then issues the permits. Um, the building structure, apartment building, is still under review, but I think they anticipate getting those released from DCA. Uh, we're in the process of coordinating the closing, which is going to be within the, the next few weeks. Um, there will be, um, in connection with that, of course, uh, the rescue squad will be temporarily relocating. We're finalizing the arrangements for that, uh, ultimately to end up in a new home. Um, the other big component, and certainly for the public out there, uh, and, and we'll be working very closely with the Parking Authority, because there will be a point relatively soon where unfortunately, the Third and Valley parking lot is not going to be available for our commuter parking. So, we're developing, uh, a number of alternative sites, including, uh, new waterlands, some streets. Eventually, uh, we're identified another property that we're hopefully going to be, uh, finalizing an agreement on that'll provide some additional parking, but, um, just giving a heads up to, to all the commuters out there that are used to parking in that lot. And I know Mark Hartwick and his crew will do a great job notifying people. They have email lists, they have all that, but, um, it's, it's very exciting, and we're going to start seeing groundbreaking over there, and, and just another, um, you know, we've all seen the Gateway really moving along, maybe slowed a little bit by the weather, but, uh, you know, can't wait to see that open, and, and he's still looking, uh, late summer, early fall, uh, for occupancy over at the Gateway, which I think is a huge step. And, um, I think as that's finishing up, you're going to start seeing, uh, Third and Valley go up. So that, that's exciting, but really just more or less wanted to give a little bit of an update, and, and particularly a heads up to, uh, Parkers over there to be on the lookout for, uh, and we will, uh, do every effort, both on our website and through Parking Authority, to notify people of all their alternate options for parking.
We're just going to send them up to Seaton Hall.
Um, I had a note, but, uh, again, um, you know, the snow removal, uh, they, they continue to do just really an unbelievable job. I echo the village president's, uh, comments. Um, I notice from, uh, not living in town and driving through, depending on which way I go, as many as four, or five, or six other towns, uh, you know, South Orange is, is on a par with, and usually much better than virtually any other town I go through. So a lot of credit to Tommy Machete and his crew. Uh, as noted, we, we are one of the fortunate few that, uh, Tommy did an incredible job with, uh, sort of stewarding over his salt supply, uh, that we thus far, which is part of the reason why our roads are black and everyone else's are covered with ice. Uh, we are still, though, getting dangerously low, and we're all anxiously awaiting. We're hope, hopefully going to get delivery soon, uh, but again, just credit to the DPW. Um, I touched upon briefly, uh, but just as a little bit of an update, our new, uh, CFO, Chris Batalia, who took the helm January 1st, uh, has been very busy. Um, I've been working closely with him, he's been working closely with, uh, the, the whole finance department. Um, and we had sort of foreshadowed that this was coming. There's a lot of restructuring in terms of the account, the account structures, or how the capital accounts, uh, the current fund accounts, the reports, uh, working closely with Trustee Levison from Finance to, to get the reports. And I, and I think, uh, and I'm confident that he will be pleased that the, the result of this is going to be a much more, uh, logical, easy-to-read format. I think that we, uh, would then envision, you know, being in a posi, you know, sometimes it was like, "Well, if you give everybody the reports, it's so confusing that it, it's almost counterproductive, because it'll generate so many questions." These are going to be very straightforward. Um, it's much more consistent with what I would call the more standard format. Um, and it, it's, uh, I think we're really making positive strides there, and, and so that's, I, I just wanted to rest, recognize Chris and, and, uh, you know, commend the board for its decision. Um, little update on the Maplewood, um, IT contract. As noted, we're using Public Stuff, that seems to be working out. Uh, we're moving forward with, with another hire in IT, um, accordance with the budget that we put in there that's largely offset by the, um, uh, revenue that we anticipate. We finished the first month of January, the hourly billings were, were about on target, I think slightly above what would project out to be the contract minimum, and I, and I think that's a positive sign. Uh, had nothing but positive feedback from Maplewood. So I, I think that's, uh, just another example of where, you know, the two towns together, we can share resources. Um, they help us in terms of the revenues that we get to help, because with that additional person, some of that time is spent in Maplewood, but a, a larger portion of it is spent on our, uh, considerable, uh, growing IT needs, thanks to Trustee Levison. Um, but, uh, so that, that, again, is, I, I think, a really a good example, uh, and it's working out well, and I've had nothing but positive feedback from Maplewood as well. Uh, and would, you know, recognize and commend Stan Wilkinson, our IT director, who, who, you know, kind of took the reins on that. Um, Steve, who's up in the back doing the video, has also been very involved, so, uh, thanks to him as well. Um, I have a number of other items, but I don't want to kind of jump the gun and leave nobody to talk about with their committee reports, because I, I'll, I'll just plug in, um, you know, as, uh, Finance and IT, and Public Safety and some of those committees, uh, to the extent I need to weigh in. If something is overlooked, I'll do that, but I don't want to steal anybody's thunder. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Mr. Rother, do you have anything?
Can I ask a quick statement? If you noticed, actually, to my colleagues on the board, the administrator failed to recognize that he did the lion's share of the budget. So, while you went through thanking everybody, I think anybody who sits on this Board of Trustees knows that delivering a budget under 1% hasn't been done in 15 years, is actually a testament to you and the way that you view municipal finance. So, thank you to you, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you.
Here, here. And I think that we all agree as well, that not only is the skills of our administrator really exceptional, but the process by which we are considering the budget is also much better than it used to be, much more direct, and shorter meetings. So, thank you for that, too.
And clear documents and forms.
Which is helpful, not only for us, but also for members of the public, because we can tell people that we're going to be at around 1% or a little below 1%, and that's what it's probably going to be. And so, it's nice to be able to give the public that kind of inaccurate guidance, so that they can plan out for themselves, too.
I had one other thing before I turn it over, and I apologize, because this may not come up, but I do, Trustee Davis Ford reminded me, and I was remiss in not getting back to her sooner. You recall, we discussed at a previous meeting about returning to the practice, having department heads attending the conference agenda meetings, and, but then there was some back and forth about whether it needs to be all the department heads. So, we have had some conversations, and I was putting together a proposal of, and I don't mean this in any way to sort of, any class distinctions among department heads, but to identify those department heads, that my sense would be, there is a likelihood of some project or some issue coming up, that it would be beneficial to have them-
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was a little perturbed.
I'm aware of that. And, but, so then, what I would say is, I want to give you a recommendation, and say, you know, we talked about, for example, like, is it necessary for the librarian to be here at every meeting? I personally don't think so. But, so I'm going to come with a recommendation of these are, you know, whereas you've got Public Safety, you've got Engineering, you've got, you know, certain ones that I think there is so many-
For example, tonight, Walter Clark has, under his presentation, under Public Works, the Transportation Advisory Committee, has a document that he sent out to review that he's going to discuss. Well, in viewing, reading the document, the summary of findings and opportunities, he had a column of the committee and a column with the village engineer, because they were tied to a particular component of this process, that the committee had one recommendation, and the village engineer may have had a difference of opinion. And this would have, this is a prime example why he should be here today. But, like you said, the library person may not need to be here anywhere for finance. Maybe Recreation Director should have perhaps been here today.
Mr. Lewis, did you have a list that you were going to recommend?
Well, yeah, and I haven't done it yet, but I haven't typed it up. But I have in my own mind, and again, the recommend, what I was going to recommend, that, you know, certain ones that would be sort of regulars, and then certainly always with the understanding that any of those that are not regulars, and I think they all understand that, that if there is a particular agenda item, we would tell them in advance and say, you know, we'd like you to be there at that meeting to discuss, you know, there may be a library thing that comes up, that we would want the library director here. But that was my thinking, and again, just between, you know, all that's been going on, and all the weather events and stuff, I was a little remiss in not getting that to Trustee Davis Ford, but I will have that.
That's fine. Great.
And maybe to the Legal and Personnel Committee would be maybe the appropriate one to review and make the, you know, I'm not saying that I'm the last word on it. So, I would make my recommendation, perhaps the committee at its next meeting can make its recommendation, whether it agrees with mine, or adds, wants to add people, or drop people, whatever.
It shouldn't be a complicated process. It should be very simple. And I can, I don't believe in activity traps, or to make something arduous. The process is very simple. They should only be required to attend if, on the agenda, doing our conference board, are items of importance, or decisions that need our input and dialogue, or any other questions that, as a subject matter expert, for lack of a better way to articulate it, because they're head of that department, they should be here. If not, they don't need to be here.
Well, and that certainly, I think, makes sense to me, and as you were saying it, I'm thinking, I'm wondering, which we probably could, maybe even amend the job form to make one of the categories, department heads necessary, so that when you submit an item-
Oh, that's right.
If you or your committee says yes, then you can list whoever you think should be there, and we have noticed-
Absolutely. We'll do that. So, I'll do that, and then you'll take the recommendations to Legal and Personnel.
Correct.
Great. Okay. Mr. Rother?
Yes. I have two matters to report on. East Orange Water Commission litigation, the one remaining matter to finally dismiss, the Chancery action, relates to the administrative consent order. There's been what purports to be a final draft floating around. I'm told that this Thursday, East Orange Water is going to be meeting with DEP to try and finalize that. If that, in fact, gets finalized, then we're in a position to end the Chancery litigation and file our motion for reimbursement of council fees in that matter. We're still trying to set up that global meeting with East Orange Water and our committee of three or four here. Hopefully, we're going to get that scheduled this week, and the purpose of that meeting is to discuss the format for resolving the remaining contractual disputes that we have, and other miscellaneous matters. The other litigation matter that I'd like to report on is the Passaic River litigation. Occidental has taken an appeal of the settlement, and our council for the joint meeting is filing a cross-appeal, because they believe that that is necessary in order to protect our position in the settlement. We've had conversations with our council from the E-GIF, who has taken a different position. We've had a number of conversations with them this, today, and hopefully, over the course of the next 24, 48 hours, we're going to be able to resolve what the real basis for their difference of opinion is, and if indeed there is a necessity to file individually for South Orange, we'll be taking action to do that. I would like to discuss that a little bit further in executive session, when we have that later on.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Levinson?
Yeah. We postponed our meeting until later on this week because of the snowstorm, but I had, did have a couple items. One, a couple things. Tonight, I thought we were going to have the capital budget for reading. I hopefully will have it at our next meeting. This is something that we've had as an objective, that we would, the first thing in the year, be able to put out the capital budget, so that we can get our projects moving very quickly early in the year, and we can get our RFPs out. The other is that we're still looking into another outstanding loan that we have, which is the ECIA loan, so that we could, the projection is about $70,000 savings if we recast that loan. And lastly, on the IT side, we are very aggressively moving forward with the implementation of our CAD, which is the Computer Aided Dispatch System for the Police Department. We are having project and process meetings, and maybe Sheena can add to that when she does her report. We are moving forward with that, as well as a number of other pieces which are prerequisites in that project, which is a 911 system. And that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford?
I think we met January 27th. I'm, we talked about recodification. I'm going to save that for, unless, Council, you want to weigh in on any of that at all now?
No, except that we've committed to get that done the first quarter.
Okay. The other thing, and this feels like Groundhog Day, whenever we talk about the Stone House. Could you just quickly share where we're at with the Stone House?
No, I think Adam's in a better position to-
We are currently reviewing the form. They're requiring quite a bit of backup documentation on what we have done in the past, and so we're compiling historical data to include in that application, but it is being worked on. We're hoping it's going to be done quite soon, so.
Okay. I just want to just give a status on our performance review process. As I reported at our last meeting, that we had completely revamped, working with both Barry and Adam, the performance reviews forms, so they're more of a tool, an assessment, and then we rolled out the performance review forms after some training of the directors with an outside trainer who was excellent, and Adam was able to get grant funding for that training. And I believe that now Barry has met with almost all the directors. I mean, is that true, Barry?
Got a few to go, but, and I've completed all my evaluations. I have to meet with some of the department heads to finalize. The department heads are in the process of completing theirs, or will be completing theirs relatively shortly. And then, one other note we have, actually more of the training tomorrow, I think, also grant funding.
Okay. And so, I'm pleased about that process, and after rolling this out this year, there's a little tweaking still to be done, but next year, we'll be able to start a little sooner and have it. The goal is to have all of the performance evaluations completed at the end of January. And Adam, what is the training scheduled for? Is it tomorrow, Wednesday?
It is tomorrow. We're doing two sessions, a morning session and an afternoon session. We're going to be, it's called Managing a Diverse Workforce.
Okay. And that's all I'm going to report on today.
Thank you. Trustee Rosner?
Planning and zoning, we met on January 14th. One of the things I just want to point out is that code enforcement has been doing a neighborhood-by-neighborhood check or inspections and so forth, to make sure everyone's, all violations. They started in the Valley Street area, and then moving on to other neighborhoods, till they complete the whole village, just to make sure everything is done in a fair and orderly process. Also, because that person, because our building department person has a connection with the PSCNG person, he has reported us that gas, light, repairs are in process, but that he was pretty much up to date. And I know it usually falls under DPW, because Tony's there, and he has the connection, we do discuss it. I'm waiting, Jeff Serenian, who we also met, was going to hold off on a report from him, which I'll send on to the preliminary to everybody, but he'll be coming back to us in a couple of months, depending on when the state meets and upgrades the things in the courts. And finally, the building department person, Tony Grinchey, had come to me with a suggestion about keeping late-night hours, one night a month, coinciding with the same night we have our Planning and Zoning Committee, so the third Wednesday of each month. So, he ran it by me, he'd run it by Barry. I checked with the rest of the Planning and Zoning Committee to make sure there was no objections, and there was no impact on the budget. So, starting next week, we'll be saying, Building Department will be open from 4:30 to, well, be open all day, normal hours, extended hours, three hours past the normal hours. And I thought it was a great idea by Tony to do it, and great initiative, since it has no impact on the budget. But I think we could also probably look at other areas where maybe we can possibly do something with the building department, and maybe like, you know, once a quarter, then the taxes are due, have, stay open late one night during that time, also so people can pay their taxes in the evening if they want to come down to Village Hall versus paying it online, and it's not paid by the mortgage, and that and all other departments. It would impact renovations often open at night. But that's it for now.
Trustee Rosner, have you received comments from any of the trustees regarding the master plan? Any additional comments? And if not, just a reminder?
I received a comment from one trustee.
This girl?
One trustee, the one who-
We had to reschedule a meeting with Ellen, and so for the board members, if you have any comments on the master plan, comprehensive master plan, this is in a reexamen, this is looking at the totality of all of our planning documents, send them along to Trustee Rosner, please.
The RFP for the professional-
Yeah, for the RFP. But once that document is done, we're obviously going to want everyone's input, including the planning board and the Board of Adjustment. And, you know, my fault, we had to postpone twice due to work inconveniences, you know, my work schedule.
Okay. Trustee Collum?
Yay. No, I'll keep it very short, because I know we have closed session.
Have you already expressed yours?
Big thing that we did, I'm going to narrow it down just to one. This past Friday, we had our pre-proposal conference meeting. This is regarding the radio communications, public safety. So, just an overview for the Board of Trustees on what type of timeline that we're looking at. So, we met with the vendors. They now have the next couple weeks to craft their responses. Those are due on the 27th. The following week, we'll be distributing those out to the departments, the appropriate public safety departments, et cetera, to make some recommendations, and then we will bring back to interview the top-ranked consultants. And then, we will hopefully have something to the Board of Trustees at our March 24th meeting for action. The other thing, and just to piggyback off of what Howard was saying, the CAD RMS project is going very well. You guys authorized a fantastic project manager who's working very diligently on our behalf, and I'm anticipating, and Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, that at the next meeting, we will have another authorization for WTH. And that is, Howard, can you just give a brief description on what that contract will be?
That allows us to code into the CAD, the Computer Aided Dispatch System, GIS information, graphical, graphic information system identification, that's latitude and longitude. They are a firm that will be going out and identifying the various locations, and inputting it into the CAD RMS system for us. We have a subsidiary project because of the water system. The DEP has a requirement for us to as well, put in GIS information on our water system. So, we're looking to them as well to update our plans, and so we could submit that to the DEP as well. We have six months to do that. So, there is a combination of projects that we're putting together with them.
I would just add to that, because it occurred to me, sitting here, for the public out there, CAD RMS is Computer Aided Dispatch, and the RMS is Records Management System. It's the software that the Police Department uses from the dispatcher dispatching the officer. It's on the computers, both in the headquarters and in the car, and the GIS mapping obviously incorporates the map overlay into that. And so, what it allows is, you know, as an officer's dispatch, to go to a particular scene, they can pull up the map, they can see, you know, get all the data on that property, who lives there, how many people lives there, is there somebody disabled in there, are there outstanding warrants, are there, including down to the apartment level of which apartments. You can see the history of calls. So, just in terms of the layman, what CAD RMS is, we throw it around, and we all know what it is, but it occurred to me that some people may not necessarily know.
Well, and it as well, it gives us a product that allows us to have a large map of the village, and it will pinpoint where the dispatch locations are, what cars have been dispatched to those particular locations.
As you recall, we had changed our meeting, so we just had one last week, but we have one coming up. So, if any board members have any agenda items that they would like, it is the last Tuesday in February, so just send them along to me. And I will forward our minutes from our last meeting, because there's a lot more details in there that I didn't cover. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Clark?
Okay.
He makes us look bad when he does this, by the way. What is this? I'm kidding. He used the projector.
Oh, I thought you were putting on my glasses.
No.
No, just everything you do. This makes us all look bad.
We've got the presentation.
Listen, don't pick on Mr. GQ.
Oh, she says picking on me. Okay, so, to Public Works and Infrastructure, I'll just focus on them rather than various other committees. So, to go back a couple of months, and backfill a little bit, it came up as a result of some parking issues along South Orange Avenue, that in 2007, the village engineer had put forth a proposal to add a center turning lane for pretty much the entirety, as many opportunities as possible, on the eastern section of South Orange Avenue. And so, what I did was, after that discussion, the village president wanted us to basically put a study together, and so I took it to the South Orange Transportation Advisory Committee, and then back to Public Works to get commentary on, and various ideas from both of those two groups. So, the document I submitted to you is my attempt to make a concise version of that, and because I'm me, I had to draw things out in order to make sense of it. So, to what Trustee Davis Ford said earlier, there were some disagreements between the village engineer's assessment and what the Transportation Advisory Committee came up with, but I would, and I'll get into some of those, because there are different opportunities based upon the different sections of the road. But the overall agreement is that there are opportunities for improvement on that section of road, and that it would, it would definitely take a, it would be wise to get input from all the stakeholders in the community. So, not just, we'd have to have the county involved, obviously, it's their road, but we would want to involve Seton Hall University, we'd want to involve the residents around, we'd want to involve probably New Jersey Transit, whatever bus, other bus lines go along that section. So, it would be a long walk, no matter what that is. But, the opportunities are there to improve the road, and as far as complete streets go, the county has indicated that they are interested in- And as far as complete streets go, the county has indicated that they are interested in a complete streets program, and this is one area that would certainly benefit from it. And South Orange would certainly benefit from it, because it is literally and figuratively the introduction to our town. So to get into the, the chart section, is there a way you can scroll that up a little bit? There we go. Uh, that's a little too far. Well, so to try to simplify things, I made a little chart there, as far as what some of the opportunities are. In the overall, the, the idea was to originally have a, a center turning lane, which would basically allow traffic to flow more easily, because in the narrower sections of South Orange Avenue, where you have parking on the sides, it, it, it tends to mitigate the actual two-lane, one travel lane, one passing lane situation. So you have a lane and sort of a half. So the center turning lane is, is seen as allowing a safer alternative for making left-hand turns, obviously, but also for emergency vehicles, it gives them a pretty quick access line. As far as other things that could happen along there, I know the village president was interested in some type of landscaped median, sort of introduce, introduce people to our town with-
No, you just need to speak up a little bit, like, over Howard's laptop.
Oh, over Howard's laptop. Wow. Didn't realize that was competition this evening.
It's crowded things out a little bit over here.
One of, one of the line of village laptops.
Oh, okay. Didn't know what I was up against.
The next one's going to have no moving parts.
Tough crowd. So anyway, a landscaped median, there's really only one area possible for a landscaped median, and I'll get to the, the drawing later on. As far as two travel lanes, that, that is, there's only a couple areas where you have two travel lanes, honestly, as long as there is street parking. And one of the other options, which many of you won't be surprised that I'm interested in, is a bike lane, which the Transportation Authority, our advisory committee was, thought there were possibilities in a particular section, and an opportunity to kind of link Seton Hall University to the downtown. So if you could scroll up to the next page, and I don't know if we're able to fit the entire page on there. All right, can you fit the whole thing on there?
Do you want to borrow trustee Levinson's laptop over there?
All right, well, I attempted to break down the street, and I apologize to any urban planners out there, I'm sure there's some kind of a visual language established for indicating these things, but I don't know what it is, so I just started drawing. But, so, the far section to the right is the area where we could have a, some type of landscaped median, because it's the only area where the road is wide enough to accommodate, at this point, two lanes of traffic and parking. So you'd be, if you went for a landscaped median, you would probably be losing the, the parking there. You have to decide whether or not you want parking there or not. The SOTAC pointed out that you could have a, what do you call the modest, six-foot-wide landscaped median, but that would really only support shrubs, because in order to have proper trees, you have to have a much wider base for the root ball, and so that would be a twelve-foot one. That's the only area where that would be possible, far right and green. The section in yellow was the area where it was seen as an opportunity to put in a bike lane, from, basically taking you from Seton Hall University's front door there near Center Street, most of the way back to downtown, and there's a number of ways you can do that with sharrows or various other things. One of the safer ones is to establish the bike lane immediately off the curb, and then establish parking in between the bike lane and the road. So when there are physical cars parked there, they are a physical barrier. The village engineer, I should point out, as far as the bike lane, felt that that was pretty dangerous, and that, basically, given the number of cars that they are aware of traveling there on a daily basis, that that could be a problem. I can tell you, as a cyclist, I think you might be right about that one. It would be great to connect Seton Hall University to the downtown some way via a bike lane, because especially if we're talking about a bike-sharing program of any kind, one of the issues with bike-sharing programs is always density of usage, and do you have locations where one drop-off point can feed the pickup point and back and forth? And I think certainly for university students, given, you know, bike-well weather, much easier way to get in and out of town. So, something that would need to be looked into. And so that is my final point, that in any case, we would need to go to the, to go to the county, and get them involved with, with any of these things. So what I'm really interested in is, is the board interested in pursuing this? We would probably have to do a traffic study, which Sal back of Napkin thought was fifty thousand. Whether or not we're footing the bill for that, or whether or not the county's footing the bill for that, is going to be a discussion, but, I mean, do people think there is value in pursuing this?
Are you, trustee Clark, are you asking, just, just so I'm clear, are you asking if we're endorsing one of the particular plans or components, or just kind of overall?
The overall, because-
So, so then, I, I would say, and I would love to organize, if people want to, a meeting with, with the county representatives, to see if we can get them to share, you know, or completely take on the cost of doing this. Because they are spending, they are spending a lot of, obviously, that would be ideal. They are spending a lot of time and money looking at the west side of South Orange Ave, where the S-curves are. And I think they, I could be wrong, but I thought there was grant money that was being-
Huge federal money.
Right, so maybe they can break off a little piece of that.
No, it's all allocated. It was passed for the S-curves and everything. It's, as soon as the weather breaks, it's, it's brown, it's going to be broken, it's going to, it's going to take two years to complete that project. There will be no closing off of traffic, but it's, it's huge, and it's, you're talking about millions and millions of dollars in this project, and it's all federally funded, except for a small portion of it.
Right, right. So, so, so maybe we can at least reach out to them and see if they'd be willing to come in, maybe that's a meeting that you, Sal, someone from SOTAC-
Yeah, I would definitely reach out initially, and, and just to, just to see what kind of, what kind of interest there is from the county before going too far along those lines.
There was really interest, though, though, because some of the, to echo your comments, some of the other freeholders who are responsible for South Orange Avenue and other parts of the county said, what about the east? So it might be good, you probably may be, can get some support by talking to those freeholders who are also interested in the east side of South Orange, too. So, I can let you know who those individuals are.
Clark, I, I, we talked about this at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting. I, my only concern about it, I, I like bike lanes, I like all that stuff, is just kind of where this ranks in terms of priorities, road-wise. With respect to the county, if they want to, you know, foot the bill on this, God bless them, but they recently just, I believe, the price tag was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or so for the traffic light that we're getting on Scotland, so I'm not sure if they're going to be quick to say, South Orange, we're back again. I mean, their budget is pretty tight, as Deborah would say. And then we're also, back to Irvington Avenue, which I feel like the board believed was going to be a priority, there's going to be streetscaping things that I think we'll want to do, and we'll want to partner with the county on also in terms of resources. So maybe, conceptually, love it, but maybe at our planning meeting, kind of go through the roads that are the priorities for us to tackle.
I think no matter what, this is years and years out. I mean, the process alone of getting all the stakeholders involved, and developing any kind of a real concrete plan for, for changing the road in any way, is, is years out.
And I think that's a good timeline. It's not one at the expense of the other. Irvington Avenue is more relatively immediate, and so the resources for that is relatively more immediate, whereas trustee Clark stated that this is a long-term process, so they can be worked on in parallel without one not cannibalizing the other regarding resources.
And we need to reach out to the county anyway, and get a little bit of an update about the Scotland improvements and all that kind of stuff, so maybe we could do a little bit of two-for-meeting. So that's, so that, at least gauging what their potential interest might be, you're, in the future about this, and getting an update on that, is maybe a meeting that we can reach out and schedule right away. And trustee Clark, it's probably not a bad project to loop you in on, too. We started that, or passed that, I guess, before you were, you guys were on the board, but, anyway, thank you for, thank you for doing all this legwork and looking at this.
Drawing looks fantastic. Totally raised the bar.
I liked the version of the, trustee Clark, was that the girl from Eponima? You were home in there?
All right, who said? Are we at the end? Recreation.
Yes, trustee-
Oh, no, the fund committee.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know you're all, you know-
Do you have any graphics prepared? If not, you can just-
I just have stuff that's the fund committee, so it's, it's all stuff that you're all eager to hear. I don't want to deprive you guys of all the good stuff, so. Actually, the recreation committee, the, the center is, is very busy right now, preparing for the spring activities, that includes baseball, which registration just began. Sunday Adult Softball League, suburban softball, spring soccer, and summer camps all are taking registration. There has been a change to help residents for the playground camp, there's an early drop-off, there's an option to drop your child off at eight AM instead of the regular nine AM start, so that gives commuters and other folks a little more flexibility. There is an opportunity, we're, for, for membership, the renewals for the pool, as well as the community garden. The Barrett Center is accepting applications for both of those. And there's a new opportunity in town, which I want to share with you, actually, I think it's, it's pretty exciting. It's the weekend of Father's Day, the day before, on Saturday, June eighteenth. The South Orange and Maplewood Recreation Centers, along with the YMCA, YMCA, are going to run a kids' triathlon. So that'll be from ages, I think, seven to fourteen, and where the idea is perhaps to take, change places between South Orange and Maplewood. This year, it will be in South Orange, around our pool, and they'll be doing a, a mini triathlon, obviously, but it will include pool, biking, and running. And we'll be using it also as a fundraiser, kind of the way we do some of the five Ks around town. Steve, shout-out, are, are they still looking for people to help out with the development of the, the program for that? I would be pretty certain they would like to have volunteers. I would expect the rescue squad, we're going to need public safety contributions, we're going to have to block off some, some roads, so absolutely, we'll be, we'll be reaching out for that, as well as fundraising opportunities as well. Thank you. And what else we got? There, there is on the capital, as part of the budgeting, we took a look at, recreation has a number, a very long spreadsheet of capital projects that are pending. One of the items that we are inviting resident input, and, so the, this past meeting was January twenty-third, the next one is February, I believe, twenty-third, it's the third, third, the fourth Thursday, which is the twenty-seventh, and we're going to be taking a look at the tennis court. So many of you who use the tennis courts, the two, there's several locations, but they need quite a decent amount of repair, specifically the ones on, on Cameron. So we're going to take a look at what's necessary there, and we'd like input for that. Another update, which I think is really exciting, is South Orange has been invited and is joining what's called TRYCAN, T-R-Y-C-A-N. It's a collaboration formed to develop and provide special need programs for families in participating towns around recreation. So this is a really nice way for kids to come down who have special needs and be exposed to various recreational sports, so they can feel more comfortable, and then perhaps even be included in, in the, the larger programs after that. So lots going on, I'll, I'll keep it short, and-
Thank you.
Go from there.
Okay. Unless there is anything else, we need to go back into executive session. You know what I should probably do is just, the only two items that were discussed before were the rescue squad building construction and the asbestos Village Hall stuff. So everything else we still need to discuss. Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourn.
No.